Meeting to order, Ms. Hunt.
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please join me in the pledge?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Mr. McDougall from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Got a motion for Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Mr. McDougall from tonight's meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, starting item number three, announcements and committee reports. Couple from me, just a quick COVID update. I think everybody's seeing the numbers, but the official numbers from Skagit County, down almost forty percent as far as cases, hospitalization rates down twenty-five percent. Our own island hospitals holding steady at three COVID patients. So all pretty good news. The numbers for vaccinations, just, I talked about this last report that Skagit County changed from five, from twelve and up to five and up, so that changed the numbers. So seventy-five percent for five and up, so it's really about eighty percent for twelve and up. And as you probably already know, the governor, acting under his emergency authority, announced that March twenty-fifth, face masks will no longer be required in most settings, including K through twelve schools and childcare facilities. And there was some other things there, but that's pretty much it. So maybe not at the end, but at the beginning of the end, thankfully. And one other thing, I've been getting, we've been getting a lot of calls at the city about utility billing, and yes, the bills did go up a good bit, and that's because we have a CPI inflator on that, so a inflation that is tied to our rates. So you've probably seen about a six percent increase on your utility bills. And that's all from me. Over to council for first three A, Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
I'm happy to do it.
All right, well, rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah, hold on, I got this.
Uh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Uh, so we talked a little, we kind of had just kind of a working session, February seventeenth, Thursday. You know, we talked a little, we've got a group who have Habitat for Humanity, and we kind of just worked on some questions to get some further information about how their organization works and how they handle leases, a ground lease in relation to building some homes, and what expectations are set forward once a person owns a home, and then how it's turned over for future homeownership. So we worked on some of those kind of questions because we got a meeting with them. And then we also, what else did we do? We've got a great meeting next week with Taylor Webb, I guess it's tomorrow, what day is it, Tuesday, Thursday, with Taylor Webb, who's with Sustainable Connections out of Bellingham for housing issues. And then on March third, we'll have Tina Tate come and speak. She's the new director for Habitat for Humanity. And then also, the president talk about kind of their proposal for possibly building some Habitat for Humanity homes within Anacortes city limits on some property that the city currently owns. I think that's about it. If anyone else from our committee has anything to add, please feel free.
All right, nothing heard, so we'll move on to item three B, Traffic Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Traffic Safety Committee was held last Friday, and I was the only council member there with staff. And the things that we talked about included two items that are on the agenda tonight, so I won't go into those in detail. Those are upcoming public hearings that we'll learn a lot about. We talked about some of the parking changes, though, about some residential parking issues near the high school, and changes to those. And we also talked about a citizen question about doing some traffic calming on Q Avenue around Twenty-Fifth, because there's not a stop sign between, I believe it's Twenty-second and almost up to where the bowling alley used to be. And there was a complaint about speeding cars, and a lot of people walk on that route or ride their bikes. And as it turns out, the speed study revealed that there's virtually no speeding on that road. So no action will be taken there by the city, but just another reminder to not speed and watch out for people. We talked also about some grants that will be available from the federal government that the staff is looking into. And then there have been some questions about the proposed roundabout on our avenue, why it's going where it's, you know, why it's proposed to be at Thirty-first Street instead of Thirty-second. And so there's information about that on the project page, on the Public Works page of the city website. So information is there, and more will be forthcoming on that. And that was, that was it. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And three C, Parks and Recreation Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. That meeting took place last week also, and Ms. Hubick and Mr. McDougall and I attended with staff. And lots of good things going on at Parks. There, the cemetery expansion is going on, it's going well, and some changes in pricing will be coming to council for grave plots. And staff has done a study of similar cemeteries around the area that are owned by cities and what their rates are. It turns out ours are quite low. So that will be coming forward to council. The big excitement right now seems to be around electric motorized bikes, and those conversations have been ongoing for a couple of months now. This might be the third month that the topic has been taken on by the Forest Advisory Board, and lots of public comments, which is great, lots of involvement, probably close to a hundred comments. And apparently, about half and half, so stay tuned for that. And I can't remember what the deadline is for comment, but you could look on the city website. It's pretty soon, but if you have an opinion, please weigh in. And also, it will be coming to council, and you'll have opportunity to do, comment in person as well. We talked about the Conservation Easement Program Language Contract, that's all being cleaned up with help from the Skagit Land Trust and staff, and that will be coming to City Council for approval on March seventh. We talked a little bit about the Rotary Project for the Cap Santa Trail Improvement, which is moving forward. And we will also be looking forward to more events this summer, like Kids Are Best Fest and Bark in the Park, as COVID restrictions thankfully lift, because thankfully, the cases are going down. We talked a little bit about the Senior Center, and one of the projects recently done was an old fence was taken out, and an expanded outdoor common use area was created, which is great. And the numbers are ticking up for attendance there. Also, there was a vaccination clinic there in January, a hundred and three people showed up, which was fantastic. And then another twenty-seven in February. And there, I think, is going to be Carl Wolfswinkel, who's in charge of the center, does a monthly chat, too. So that's something that people might want to think about attending and learn about all the exciting things that are going on at the Senior Center. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Great report. And next, item three D is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, trifecta. All right, Ms. Moulton.
Okay, I'm gonna keep this one short, because we're gonna talk about the main thing on the agenda. So there is a new organization in the county who has a shower trailer and is looking for a place to set it up in Anacortes, so people in need can have access to showers once or twice a week. So we started the conversation at Public Works, because it was brought forward as an idea that maybe that could be set up at the wastewater treatment plant, because that's a great place to dispose of water. It's fairly centrally located. Anyway, just the very beginnings of the conversation, volunteers would be needed to clean and sanitize it, and, you know, a lot of questions, but a great need that we would love to help fill. So that conversation will move on to the Hacks Committee, and we'll talk more about details there. We mainly talked about the water system plan, and we're gonna have a, we had a preview of a presentation by Mr. McDaniel, who runs the water treatment plant, and it's a good one, so I won't tell you more about that, so I won't steal his thunder on that. So he'll be bringing all that forward really soon. And that's it for that. Thanks.
Okay, great. Any other committee reports that may have missed? Okay, we're on item, Mr. Young.
Yeah, if I could, I just really wanted to thank you and the council members, as well as the citizens of Anacortes for the outpouring of love and support during the loss of my brother. It was very unexpected, and so it was sort of a very difficult time to try to pull it all together. I'm sure you know, it's still difficult. But, you know, the love and support that came from the city just shined bright. And it was that bright spot in the middle of all of that, that, you know, allows you to hang on tight and still do what you needed to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, item four, public comment. This is the time on the agenda where we open it up for public comment. Anybody who is in the city council chambers or online to comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. The floor is open. All right, I'm thinking that all the folks here have some comments to make on tonight's agenda items, and we'll be sure to get to you there. Okay, moving on to item five, our consent agenda. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to approve our consent agenda items. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're on to item six. This is a public hearing. It's a public hearing for two items, ordinance number forty-twelve and forty-thirteen. I'd just like to say that we're not gonna do a presentation on ordinance number forty-twelve, amending chapter ten, twelve, regarding stopping, standing, and parking. Parking is always a challenging issue for us. I sometimes call it the Holy Grail of ordinances. So we've got a lot of input, and we've got a lot of things that we need to look at. We've received a lot of input from, not only from you, council, but members of the public, and we need to work that. So I'm more than happy to take comment, and you wanted to, I'm more than happy to take comment on that, but we're not gonna have a formal presentation on that tonight. Mr. Buckmeyer, did you have something you needed to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's actually, I think, I believe, two public hearings scheduled. The first one, we were going to open and continue, and the second one, we're gonna have with the public comment, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll keep them open and continue, and then look for public comment. As always, you can send public comment to cityclerk@cityofanacortes.org. So at this time, Mr. Walters.
Could we give the public maybe just a little taste of what was being proposed under ordinance forty-twelve? Not the specifics, because I understand we're gonna be making modifications. But, you know, in the interest of getting public comment, they need to know what they're supposed to be commenting on.
Yeah, that sounds fine. You wanna take that, Mr. Buckmeyer? Give us a little preview?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. One of the items on that ordinance was a parking, residential parking restriction, or whatever you wanna call it, on Sixth Street, right across the street from the ferry. It's in existence now on the north side of the street. The proposal would be to make that same restriction on the south side of Sixth. There was some, one, there was a parking or loading zone on T Avenue. There was a restructuring and an additional street being added to the high school residential parking zone also. And I can't remember if I missed something on there, there's like an eclectic bunch of stuff we were gonna gather together and put all on one ordinance.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
There was also a restriction on, or a time limit on parking at the park adjacent to the Gwemas Ferry.
Thank you.
Yep, that is correct. So again, it is available online. Please take a look at it, and please don't hesitate to comment. All right, so.
Excuse me, Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Are we continuing the public hearing to a date certain?
We are continuing the public hearing until two weeks from now, and don't have the calendar in front of me, so not next week's council meeting, but the following week.
March seventh.
Thank you. We will continue that public hearing. So we have plenty of time to get comments in on that. All right, now, Mr. Buckmeyer, are you ready for, to introduce item six B?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I am. For your consideration this evening is an ordinance that would create a short length of one-way street in the city. Basically, that would be Sixth Street as it turns into H Avenue, and near the Gwemas Ferry and the Kiwanis Park and that vicinity there. A little bit of background, this is maybe two years old, I don't know, maybe a little bit younger than that, but it's not yesterday, and it's not ten years ago, it's relatively new. That was, this item was first discussed. It has been deliberated on by the Traffic Safety Committee a number of times, I don't know how many times exactly, but several times. The problem that we're solving, that would be solved by this, is primarily pedestrian and bike safety. This one-way street, I got a little diagram up here, this one-way street configuration occurs annually during the Gwemas Ferry shutdown. So we put this in place on a temporary basis while the shutdown happens, and then we, and they're haul out, and then we return it back to two-way traffic after that. So this ordinance would make, basically make what we do there a permanent solution to it. Let's see, I spoke about this at the Public Works Committee, but I'll just repeat it for sake of consistency. The, so this particular map, diagram, engineering diagram, is an attempt at implementing what the Traffic Safety Committee recommended, right? But I think the essence of the decision tonight is, do we wanna make this a one-way street or not? Is that, do we wanna put that in place? We can work around the details of colors of paint, and signing, and striping, and those kind of things at any time in the future. But I think the essence of what we might wanna walk away from tonight is, do we wanna make it a one-way street or not? And with that, I'll open it up to the floor, and thank you.
Well, we can start with opening up for any public comment, any members of the audience that want to talk, talk to us about this one, please. Yeah, come on up, just state your name and where you live, and say whatever you gotta say.
My name is Barbara Larson. I live at seventeen-twenty Eighth Street. It's the corner of Eighth and H.
Oh, great.
And I have lived there for several years.
And I know it's challenging. Can you make sure that the mic, you can move the mic, you can grab that microphone and move it a little bit closer to make?
I will do that.
Yeah, I know it's hard with the.
I'm gonna try to make, thank you very much. The COVID issue has made it possible for me to spend a lot more time at home and outside. And one of the things that I know about that portion of the city that you're talking about, is there is a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. There's a few bicycles, there are some cars, there's a bus, a huge bus, every half hour, empty almost all the time. I would say ninety-nine percent of the time, it doesn't have any passengers on it. I've talked to Skagit Transit repeatedly, and they tell me that they're serving their clients from Gwemas Island, but they don't match the Gwemas Ferry schedule. You know, there is a street at the ferry dock which goes straight up from the ferry, however, they don't use that street. They come down H and whip around the corner and up the hill. There's two stop signs between Sixth and Eighth. It's about a thirty percent incline. It's not a safe thing to do. On the February first issue of The Herald, the Skagit Transit announced that they're making route changes to serve the public. However, four oh nine, which is the route that comes up Sixth and H, is not on that list. I think it's a safety hazard, and if indeed you are considering the safety of the community as part of the reason you're doing this, I wonder, has anybody from the engineering department spent any time down there watching what really happens on that section of the road? Or are you just listening to the people who, I'm not sure why, two years it's taken to think this over and now decide that this is a really good idea? I think honestly, you need to think a lot harder about it.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Ms. Larson, could, would you answer a question for me? I know I'm sort of playing a little bit of catch-up, but I wanted you to just state clearly, are you opposed to what's the suggestion of what we're considering? And just sort of state that clearly through that.
Yes, I am actually opposed to your proposal. I am opposed to your proposal.
And if I heard you correctly, what you were saying was, you were pointing out not only were Skagit Transit buses, even though they're giving service to Gwemas, but that you're noticing that they're sort of arriving empty, and then, and sort of the path that they've chosen to use, you're suggesting that it's unsafe, and then at the same time, there's a better way to do it?
There's a lot better way to do it. And I think there's a lot better way to figure out how to keep the pedestrians and the parking spots and everything safe during the haul out, and for the rest of the year, if that's what you're thinking about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the input. Hello.
Hello. My name is Susannah Clements. I live at eighteen oh seven Seventh, so right on the corner of Seventh and H. I'm a fourth-generation Old Town Anacortes resident and proud homeowner in our city. Over the past year, my husband and children and I have embarked on building our dream home on the corner of Seventh and H. While building any new home comes with its challenges, COVID has added a few additional layers for us. Despite the woes of building a new home, we are thrilled to have the opportunity to raise our children in this community, but more specifically, within Old Town. I grew up in this neighborhood. I learned to ride my bike on Seventh Street, spent summer days walking down to the library, and countless trips to Gwemas in search of that perfect agate. The question that I had was, what is the question that the city is trying to solve for? Thank you for letting us know that it is about safety, having small children. This is music to my ears. On December twenty-second, twenty twenty, my husband and I, Jen Dunlap, who's a local architect, Christopher Yon, principal builder for Keystone Builders, along with Steve Ling, Emily Morgan, Terry Nemeth, Jack Kennedy, Rob Forsinger, Libby Grange, and Don Mesmer, met for a pre-application meeting ahead of submitting our building permits for our new home. During this conversation, we brought up the fact that there was no sidewalk running along H Avenue on either side of the street, the west or the east, and inquired about the possibility of adding. During this meeting, city representatives mentioned at the time that there was no plan to put in a sidewalk, but we could add one ourselves. While this intrigued us, our concern was actually for the water runoff that would run down H Avenue from Eighth all the way down. While a sidewalk would serve my husband and I and our children, it would cause flooding damage to the house that sits to the north, right on the corner of Sixth and H. There was no consideration for what that next piece would be to connect around the corner. As a human, I did not feel competent or good about solving an issue for myself, but leaving my neighbor underwater, so to speak. The note post-meeting that was sent from Libby mentioned that pedestrian facilities are required in this area. There is a future sidewalk map for this area. I have a copy of the report, if you'd like to see it. My question is, is a sidewalk only proposed or recommended for this area if it's funded by the homeowners? Fast forward to December eighth, twenty twenty-one, our builder and I met with Justin Simmons from the city about, again, the possibility of installing a sidewalk. During the meeting at the building site, Justin said that there was still no plan for a sidewalk or any road improvements in this area. During the onsite meeting, we talked about the lack of pedestrian safety and sidewalk accessibility for this area. His advice was similar to those expressed during our twenty twenty meeting. The city of Anacortes, again, had proposed that the homeowner put in their own sidewalk. It wasn't until January twenty-sixth, less than a month ago, that we were notified by our contractor that there was a proposal to vacate H Avenue going northbound between Sixth and Seventh. On January twenty-seventh, I went to City Hall to gain a better understanding of what the city was proposing. After spending an hour and a half with a city engineering representative, I dictated the following. This proposal was based on a single person's complaint of the current traffic in this area. At that time, the city representative informed me that there was no traffic study done to support this claim. There was no safety study for pedestrians. The decision to use plastic impact stanchions for pedestrian walkway was, quote, "the cheaper option for the city" versus installing a sidewalk to connect the Gwemas Ferry upper parking lot to Seventh. No cost-benefit analysis was done to weigh the two options. As a property owner who will be directly impacted by this change, the proposed change does not address the root cause, which is safety. The proposed change will not improve safety for traffic or pedestrians. I would in fact argue the opposite. For pedestrian safety, the proposed rose stanchions are intended, and I quote, "to delineate or guide traffic through a work zone area." This is per the Traffic Safety Warehouse website. If the problem that the city of Anacortes is trying to address is pedestrian safety, a proper sidewalk running north and south along H between Sixth and Seventh to connect the Gwemas Island Ferry upper parking lot to the surrounding neighborhood would be the best option. Sidewalks provide a vital pathway throughout our community. In Old Town, where the importance of adhering a strict standard of aesthetics to keep the character and charm of this part of the city is so important, that the Anacortes Municipal Code has some of the strictest conditions in town. However, during this proposed change, making a generational improvement to the city doesn't seem to be of importance. Why is the city not adhering to the same set of standards imposed to property owners? The additional traffic confusion during peak summer season, namely the Gwemas Ferry haulout, will add additional safety concerns for neighbors during a time where more pedestrians or children are out and about. What is the plan for the Gwemas haulout? Where will the traffic go? Where will people park? Has the city of Anacortes explored an inter-local agreement with the county to fund the sidewalk to connect these two areas? Also, the additional visual pollution that the proposed change will create is not keeping with the Old Town aesthetics. The current proposal has an additional six metal traffic signs in a four-hundred-foot area. I want to see meaningful change and improvements made to our city. I want roads and sidewalks, bike paths to serves not only current residents, but generations to come. If there is a safety issue at Sixth and H, I would expect the city and you as leaders to make the investment in infrastructure to serve citizens for today and tomorrow. I expect the city of Anacortes to protect the livability of the residents in the neighborhood. I have thirteen letters from residents within this block that we're talking about, all opposed to the current proposal presented. I'm happy to submit those. Please let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the input. It's exactly what we were looking for, the input. That's okay. No, it's fine. As long as we can hear you. Go for it.
Good evening. My name is Carmen.
A little bit closer, though, and you can make that.
There we go. My name is Carmen Sepharvich Hardy. I live at nine twenty G Avenue in Anacortes. We have a home at eighteen oh seven Seventh Street, and until recently owned the property at eighteen oh two Seventh Street. I have lived in Anacortes my entire life, in Old Town specifically, and I have taken some photographs of H Avenue between Sixth and Seventh that I'd like to share with you for your consideration.
All right, we'll pass them around.
These photographs show encroachment on the city's street. This area may be adequate to continue with a two-way street and allow for a sidewalk if the city enforced the ordinances. These images show overgrown vegetation. There's boats in the city right-of-way, derelict cars that have sat for years, an RV that's inhabited for the last several years right on the parking strip area there, and also there's a visual of some boulders that have been placed along the street. So I would just like you to take this under advisement and consider all the options, and especially a sidewalk, and I am opposed to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to say that, no, I'm not going to ask you any questions, but just for the public's knowledge, if we had enough funding, we would put sidewalks everywhere that we would like to have sidewalks. And, you know, over the years, previous codes, it wasn't required to put curb, gutter sidewalks in, and as you build new neighborhoods now, now you have to build curbs, gutter sidewalks, and that was, you know, things that we wish we had done. This particular project came about primarily through the haulout process that happens every year, plus a couple of inputs. And again, we're not married to this plan. We're just, we're looking for inputs at this point, so thank you for those inputs. And the code enforcement piece, I'll take that issue as well.
Thank you. As a point of attraction down there at Sixth and H, there's people watching the boat parade, the boat activity, the tankers coming in, the whales, et cetera. I would think that, I'm proud of my city. I would think that we would invest in infrastructure that would allow people to enjoy that, and I just don't see a one-way street there working.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name's Steve Mansfield. I live at 1719 Sixth Street. I'm right on the corner. And the big problem with this street, of course, is its width. You've got a big bank going off into the, what used to be the railroad down below and then the parking lot, and there just is very limited space of actual roadway in order to get traffic through there. I've lived there for almost 40 years. I've seen cars going too fast, both directions around the corner. There's lots of pedestrians, dog walking. I'm one of them. And it really is an awkward thing. So it's been a while. I did write a letter to the city suggesting a one-way street in there because I didn't see any other alternative that at least doesn't cost a whole lot of money. I agree, sidewalks would be wonderful. I just don't know how much right-of-way space there is. I did see the drawings that I think the Public Works Department had done, showing, trying to get some bike paths in there as well as a pedestrian walkway that wasn't really a sidewalk, but at least would be an isolated pedestrian walkway. It's just, you just have very limited space in there. I don't think you can do it all and have two-way traffic without going to the expense of extending the road surface over that bank. So, like I say, I've lived there long enough. I've seen what I would consider close calls with kids, bicycles, cars coming together closely, cars going too fast, but that's something you see all over. So, at any rate, I would be willing to accept that any solution you can come to. I don't have anything in particular in mind, but safety was the reason that I wrote my letter, and that's what I would like to see addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to comment on this? Okay, council, anybody online? Oh, yep, please, come on up.
Thank you and pardon me for shouting.
No, it's all right.
Bashi Morris, 1618 Seventh Street. I had some city folks drop a flyer off at my house about three weeks ago, this one. Fairly confusing, but I did come down to the city and talk to a couple of folks up at the engineering department. One of the things that was mentioned, I believe, were the safety attenuators. This isn't a very friendly way to go for a walk. Thirty-six inches is less than this represents, but at 10 feet, one every 10 foot, I believe there were going to be 30 of them over the course of that proposal. It just doesn't fly for how many of us would choose to use this neighborhood. Another comment I have is that there was no traffic study done. That's been touched on. I wondered if the homeowners, who now will be forced to drive through the Sixth and I intersection to access their own driveways, there are three on the alley between Sixth and Seventh, and there are two homes, one woman has already spoken. She will not be able to legally access her driveway without driving through this one-way invention. Okay. There is no comprehensive plan for this area that I know of. I asked Mr. Buckenmeyer years ago about the city sidewalk plan, and he said there was none. My understanding at that time was that if you were to build a new home, you were responsible for putting in a sidewalk. I have found that to be discretionary because in my time, 20 years in this neighborhood, there had been five brand-new homes within a two-block radius. Some already had sidewalks, but many were not made to put a sidewalk in to increase the difficulty of being in this part of town, where we have children, pedestrians, a ferry, fast traffic, and a very severe lack of sidewalks. So I've shown you this post, which many of us will, this flexible guide post would call "less-than-friendly." I talked to one of the neighbors on Sixth Street who is on the Committee for Biking, and he was unaware of this proposal whatsoever. So apparently, the biking groups in town are not made aware of this or ask their opinions. In view of the current modifications to the ferry dock, the new electric ferry, I think we need a comprehensive plan to satisfy many needs, not just pedestrian. We've got bicycle needs. We've got bike trails. I don't know exactly how they are managed in the Old Town area. I believe there's one up on Eighth. I find the arrowing for bicycles needing to ride on the east side of the street going north and needing to ride on the west side of H going south to be confusing. The road is very narrow, Mr. Mansfield, as you said, which is why you no longer have parking in front of your home. When the Gwemas Ferry originally gave that land back to the city, they didn't give it back. The city took it and made a park and made a parking lot with an ordinance for four hours' parking, which has never truly been mastered, as in many of the parking people there are there 24 to 48, 72 hours. They're high school students, and they are not there to visit the park. I don't know if all the homeowners were informed that live on the alley, because as the gentleman walked by and handed me this flyer, I said, "Who gets one?" And he pointed to the houses on that flyer. That is my comment on not being in favor of this proposal. And you briefly, very briefly, mentioned a parking resident permit pass in passing that has two weeks more to be commented on. I've seen nothing was handed to me. I think that's more important to those of us that live in the neighborhood, especially because it's right adjacent to the ferry. There are 20 parking spaces on that piece of road. Where do you think they're going to go? You're just pushing it further into the neighborhoods that don't have curbs and gutters. Some of us do have a sidewalk. This tells me that these two very disparate ideas need to be brought together and presented wholly to the neighborhood, not just to the residents on the north side of Sixth, who incidentally, every single one of them has access from the alley to a garage or a garage off of I Avenue. There is not one house on that road that does not have garage access, other than parking on that street. So I firmly believe that you should also incorporate the Sixth Street parking permit for residents to either include all of us, as they do at the high school, and make a resident parking pass for all of us that are impacted by the ferry, or make a comprehensive plan for the entire neighborhood regarding sidewalks and the ferry and the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it reminded me of my comment before of the holy grail of parking ordinances for Anacortes. And it's still elusive. We're still working on it because we realize that every time you make a parking ordinance at someplace, it affects someplace else. So that's the challenge with parking, and that's the ordinance 4012 that also talks about. So I'd encourage you to take a look at what we put out for that with regards to residence passes, because that's in the 4012 ordinance. And looking forward to more comments on that. All right, more to comment on the H Avenue one-way proposal.
A hot ticket tonight.
Yeah.
My name is Jill Davenport. I'm a third-generation Anacortes resident. I own two homes in this area.
And a little bit closer to the microphone, sorry.
Sorry. Got a whole bunch of barriers, literally. I'm a third-generation Anacortes resident. I own two homes in the area. I own one on I and Seventh and then 1708 Seventh Street. So I see a lot of activity coming off the ferry. So I was a bit surprised to see a dedicated bike lane, because when we're in our yard, we hear a lot of comments about, from bicyclists, and they are judging which route to take. Because when they come off the ferry, it's intuitive to just go straight up the hill, and then they're talking about which hill to go up because it's nothing but a steep grade, and H is steeper than I. And I often tell them to go just down one more. It's even less steep. But if bicyclists are really the concern, I don't know, people know that Sixth to H is even a bicycle route. I have driven Sixth so many times looking for a bicycle route sign, and I have never been able to find it. And for people coming off the ferry, looking, coming off the terminal, there's no indication of any bike routes. So it would be counterintuitive for someone who wanted to go westbound, which I don't think many people come off the ferry going west, would go up the hill, look at the intersection, then go, oh, I should go west one block, and then just follow it. Because there's not even, there's no sightline, so you couldn't even tell how far that road goes. And like everybody said, the signage, the striping, the barriers would just be unsightly. And not only that, they would cause a huge amount of confusion for drivers. And I see people, I can always tell when there's a fiery driver. They come flying off that hill, only to have to stop at Sixth and then notice the line is four blocks down. So I think if people are taking that route to get to the ferry, when they see all those one-way signs, they're going to go, oh crap, I have no idea where to go. And they're more focused on where to, how to get back to the ferry, than they are going to see and watch for, there's like seven small kids in our neighborhood, two of which are mine, and I can tell you, both of them are not, as much as we try, they're not looking for cars all the time. And we've got two neighbor kids that live diagonal, and those four girls are shooting across the street all the time. And people are not going to be looking for them, because they're more worried about catching the ferry, in my experience. And there was also some discussion about the bus stop. I totally believe that people, the buses headed westbound are probably empty, because people who come from Gwemas probably aren't going to be going westbound. They're going to be going eastbound, going to services or whatnot. And if you make it so that an eastbound bus, which most likely is going to pick up ferry riders, you can't make that bus stop at that stop anymore. It renders it useless, and then you're going to have to move the bus stop, and where are you going to move it to? And the only other way that the bus stop could be accessed is by going through the parking lot, which I don't think that the bus could really transverse that very well. So I think there are some issues that need to be addressed. I think I Avenue between Sixth and Seventh should probably just be permit parking only, particularly if they're taking away parking on Sixth on the south side. Because people park in front of my house, and they park in the road, not in my yard, in the road. And I've submitted all these comments in writing in advance because I wasn't sure if I'd be able to make it tonight. So there is a photo of both sides of the road. People are parked in the road, and it's very, very narrow. And I see people flying off the ferry. And when they're coming up the hill on H Avenue, or excuse me, I Avenue, I'm not joking, I have seen people hit that so hard, stuff comes off their car, and I laugh every time. One lady lost all of the bikes off the back of her car. It seemed like karma to me. So those are just the things that I would like you guys to consider, but it is about bicyclists. There's nothing to indicate that a bicycle should even use that route. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And again, the main impetus of this was, the idea was that parking is most strained during the Gwemas, the haulout of the ferry. And so that started the conversation. So, you know, step one, it's strained, and we make it a one-way during that timeframe. And the signage apparently is not terribly confusing during that timeframe during the haulout. Okay, thank you. So, no, we get it, but I'm just trying to give the background. And then on the sidewalks, 2019, we changed our codes significantly when it comes to curb requirements for new homes and sidewalks. So I think, unless there's anything new, I think I'm going to, I think we've got enough info from, okay.
Maybe this can be addressed. In terms of the ferry haulout, knowing that this was kind of impetus, my knowledge is that the county manages that. Is that correct? The city does not?
No, we have to manage the traffic and the enforcement of not only parking and the traffic flow.
Okay, so I will tell you, building in that spot with the temporary no-parking signs, my husband and I, along with my parents, managed the no-parking signs that were moved and used as parallel parking guides for people trying to park there. In terms of making a solve for the ferry haulout, I guess, if that was the number-one concern, where is the parking going for that ferry haulout? And my driveway is right where that stop sign is, so I wouldn't be able to access my driveway. And likely, if the parking is moved to overflow, I won't be able to park on the side of my home either.
I think we've got everything we need. And Mr. Buckenmeyer, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Well, and I'll let Council, if they need to make any comments. I think we've heard a good amount. Is that Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay.
So I understand this is for safety, but I'm having a hard time trying to understand the point of doing this. Do we know how many accidents have occurred in this area on why we would need to do this?
We don't have an accident history that I can share with you here.
Mr. Walters?
I appreciate all the comments that we heard tonight. I'm ready to dispense with this item now. I think the comments really show how important this neighborhood is to people and how important neighborhoods are to people who live in them. I see the point of this proposal. I see value in having become permanent the traffic control revision that we make during the haulout. Unexpected changes in traffic controls are undesirable. I see the value of a one-way street. I think Steve Mansfield's comments are well-taken, but I think Susannah Clements hit the nail on the head here. We need to pursue holistic solutions. We should not authorize any solution that includes those ridiculous plastic stanchions. Homeowners and industry keep building bigger houses and bigger buildings, and we keep having to fight back proposals to vacate street ends where we lose the view. having to fight back proposals to vacate street ends where we lose the view of the water. I'm particularly jealous of the view of the water, and I think that we ought to be protecting that whenever possible, which includes even short distractions from that view, like those little plastic stanchions. I think the opportunity here is to drive home to public works, that we need a block-by-block analysis of where we need sidewalks and where we need other street improvements. I don't think that we can afford, even though we could make a new housing development or an individual house, improve the street in front of it, I don't think that long-term we can afford 60 feet of pavement and curb gutter sidewalk everywhere, all over town, and all of the maintenance that comes with that, nor is it really needed absolutely everywhere. There are parts of Old Town where I walk in the street, because first of all, it's smoother than the sidewalk, but also it's just not necessary to have that width everywhere. But some places it is, and we need a block-by-block sidewalk map developed with public input and then adopted by the city council. Because every time a new house gets built or one undergoes major remodeling, we lose an opportunity to get another piece of sidewalk built where it is necessary. We did docket something along these lines as part of the 2021 comprehensive plan amendments. There's an item in there for modified and special standards, because there are several areas in the city where Public Works has generated special design standards for a street or neighborhood, but those need to go through public input, as we saw here tonight. And then they need to be adopted by the city council. So I would like us to dismiss this proposal for now, and if we require a motion, I'd be happy to make it, and then come back and start that work of doing that block-by-block analysis.
All right. Any other members of council like to comment? Anybody want to make a motion, or we can just withdraw this?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Mr. Walters, you know, I hear the points that you're making to the audience. I heard you loud and clear, we really do. And if it's necessary, I think as Mr. Walters said, that we sort of chaired this thing, why don't you make a motion, Mr. Walters, and then I will second it.
All right. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I move to postpone consideration indefinitely of the proposed ordinance 4013.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to propose, to postpone indefinitely ordinance number 4013 regarding one-way traffic on H Avenue. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Enjoyed the discussion. Thank you all for coming, and you're more than welcome to stay for our next item, if you would like.
Mayor Miller? Are you going to, are we going to close this public hearing?
And yes, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 4013.
Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder, and we still have 4012 is open. Okay, on to item seven, other business, contract award, water system plan update. Mr. Buckamire, on to you again.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This is very brief. I'm just going to introduce Brian McDaniel, our Water System Manager, and maybe a 50,000-foot overview of what a water system plan is. It's all water systems, all water purveyors in the state of Washington must prepare these. They're a Department of Health requirement. I think it's on a 10-year cycle or something like that. It's akin to our comprehensive plan, where we go through our zoning code, our building codes, but this is specifically for our water systems. With that, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Buckamire. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see if I can get this thing fired up. Okay, this evening we have a water system plan update contract award that we are asking Council to approve for a consultant to assist the city to update our water system plan. The water system plan, as Mr. Buckamire stated earlier, it's a requirement for all potable water systems to have a water system plan and that to be regularly updated. Our current plan was developed in 2012, and we did a four-year limited update in 2017. The limited update just did a little update on the historical and peak hourly demand, along with some wholesale forecasted demands, and then there was a critical infrastructure analysis that was completed within that, that limited update. To procure the consultant for this update, we issued an RFP August 2021. We had five firms submit on that RFP. We formed a selection committee with staff. We shortlisted two firms, interviewed those two firms, and Corolo came ahead as our preferred consultant for this project. The project scope, it's broke down into over a period of two years, and so the different tasks within, in the 2022 task, we are looking at doing the task 100, 200, and 300, the planning element for the water system plan, the high-level look at the water system plan, looking at the demand, doing those demand forecasts, reviewing the supply data. And then we move into Task 300, which is a water model development update. This is a computerized model that's typically run by a hydraulic engineer, and they run a computer program. So we are implementing with this project a new water models for the water system. The key point of this water model that is part of this project is that the city currently has a water model, but this will update that water model onto a platform that's user-friendly, and we can actually bring some of those tasks of those, what we call a model run, some of the simpler ones in-house, so staff can perform those simpler model runs. We may see some of that in, for instance, a smaller development happening within the city where we would have to contract that out with the updated water model. This newer model staff, internal staff could actually do those model runs. So the first year, we're looking at 195,000 for the 2022 tasks. Then moving into 2023, we'll continue on developing the plan with the distribution analysis, looking at what has to be done to the distribution system. That water model component is essential to do in front of the rest of the plan, because that is used to help develop what pipes we're going to replace, what we're doing for storage, and the ability to serve. Within that, we move into the operation and maintenance portion of the plan. This is the chapters that help drive your capital improvements as well, but it's our guiding document of how we operate the day-to-day water system and what we do to maintain those assets. So developing and shoring up that plan and bringing an update to that. And then there's a financial component that's done. That's going to be a heavy lift on our internal finance group, but the consultant will be supporting us with that effort. So the 2023 budget, 203,303 for that component of work. Within this scope, you'll see that there are some optional tasks. These additional tasks, we felt that could probably be delayed or maybe selected more of a menu that we don't need full support on it right up front, so we had them move those over into optional tasks. So some water model training, some more information on that water model, some asset estimated useful life effort that could be done, review our design construction standards. There is an effort that we could also leverage risk-based distribution, remove and replace component that we could add to it. But again, we call that effort, and when we say that word effort, it comes with a dollar amount. Updated our hydraulic map, and then also some modeling software with that. And that optional budget, $98,000. So that's in the optional side of that. The funding sources, the capital facilities plan, we have two projects, as I mentioned, that we will be funding this project. We have the water system plan in 2022 for $65,000, and then also $150,000 for the water model in 2022. Then, as we move into 2023, we have the $65,000 budgeted in the capital facilities plan for the water system plan, and then $126,000 for the water model in 2023. And that's how the project will be funded. As we move through the plan, one of the key components here is that this is a planning document for a long period of time. And so it's important that we get these, as we complete these chapters, we bring the decision-makers into the room and start making those decisions as we go through some of those key decisions. So as we progress through each of these chapters and complete those, we will be working with the Public Works Committee and at the appropriate times, bring this to Council for some review and approval. And with that is a very, very high level, a very complex water system plan update contract. So with that, questions?
Thank you. Open up to questions for Council. All right, since there are no questions, I assume that Council wants to read through the details a bit more, or you want to take action on it immediately. I realize it's over a two-year period, so we'll have to get authorization again in next year's budget as well.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I'm comfortable moving it forward tonight, if we would like. Public Works Committee had suggested to Mr. McDaniel that we make amendments to the scope of work to ensure that we're planning for climate change as part of this water system plan. The amendments to the scope don't do a whole lot with respect to climate change. They do call out that our demand forecasts will be addressed, but there will be also steps along the way where we can check in and make sure that we are incorporating the work that we've already done with the SCADJI Climate Science Cooperative to analyze the effects on water supply due to water, maybe turbidity, maybe salinity. I don't really anticipate there being a water quantity problem near term as a result of climate change, but we also need to make sure that we're doing that analysis and writing it down in the plan. So Mr. McDaniel has made those assurances, and we're going to have these check-in points where we can review the segments of the plan where that's relevant. And so as a result, I'm comfortable moving it forward now. I think one of the most exciting things about the plan is the Excel-based digital capital facilities planning model tool that the consultant proposed. That's really going to help staff move projects forward in a considered way in the future. If demand ends up being slightly different, or supply ends up being slightly different, or the location of demand is different, or if the expense of a project is different, we'll be able to plug those values into the model and get better fiscal planning for how that affects rates and how we do those projects. I'm pretty excited about that, because I think that theoretically, we could adapt that model to other utilities and our general capital facilities planning processes, too. So I don't know if Council needs more time to discuss, but if anybody wants me to, I'll make a motion to move it forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Walters. And yeah, I agree, I'm excited about the, you know, I'm never excited about the big prices of these plans. It's a required plan, it's a very significant plan, and I appreciate the inputs for the climate change portion, especially with turbidity of the SCADJI. It's going to take a look at that piece, as well, of course, looking at our census data and expected growth stuff that then ties into our capital facilities plan. So yeah, there's good opportunities that come out of it, even though it'll be long and expensive. But I would entertain a motion from Council at this point. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Can I ask just one question? So those optional costs that are about $98,000, it says as authorized, will you kind of determine which ones you want at certain benchmarks? Or are you expecting to do all of them, just you're not sure where they'll be fit in? Can you speak a little to that?
Yes, we put those down as optional tasks, because we felt that we could complete the plan, and as we moved through the plan, if there were, if there was portions of that work that needed to continue, we wanted to put that into optional, that the city could choose to move ahead with that. And so we weren't covering any cost to make sure that, like, the Public Works Committee and City Council, maybe we want to dive deeper into the component of the water model, so we could add that in.
So we should, you're laying the groundwork, so we should expect that to come forward in the next two years?
It's possible, but it's not anticipated.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Yes, if I could just elaborate for Councilman Cleland McGrath, part of what came forward in our committee meeting on this evening was just that discussion of if those additional items, are they really useful? And, you know, from the cost analysis of something that we were really using, it would be beneficial to us as a city. And so, you know, that question came up, and so part of what Mr. McDaniel put forward was that in this first phase right now, we will look at that later on. So, you know, I felt comfortable with moving forward, because what he also indicated was that it would be a great discussion in committee, and then those discussions of need would come forward to Council, such that we would have a prudent use of money, and we would discuss whether or not it was sufficient cost-wise for what we would get out of it. So I'm also, you know, okay with moving it forward as well. Mayor Miller, if I might?
Mr. Young?
Mr. Walters, given your eloquence at making motions, would you sort of move that forward as you indicated? And then I would second it, or someone else would have the pleasure of second it.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I certainly appreciate the need for Council to have time to ponder this $500,000 expense if we need it. I'll make a motion, and then Council can delay it if necessary. The first, one of my first votes on Council was approving our 2011, 2012 water system plan, and we didn't really get enough time to look at that. So I want to make sure that this one turns out differently. But I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign the contract as presented.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to approve the water system plan update as presented. Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Walters, does your motion include the plan as presented in the packet, or including the scope of work modified by Mr. McDaniel earlier today?
Including that modified scope of work.
Thank you for that catch.
Mr. Young, that's your second as well?
Yes.
Okay, we'll vote on that, then. Everyone has received that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal, excuse me, Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to item 7B, to 7B, and this is an update, City of Anacortes, Anacortes Family Center Social Services Contract Update. Going to be a joint effort with the major players, Mr. Johnson and Chief Floyd. And you're flipping a coin to see who goes first, and I thought Mr. Johnson was going But you could rock, paper, scissors for it, too, if you wanted to.
I lost.
He was still hanging on to his taser. He was still, he was still hanging on to his taser. That seemed unfair.
I always, always defer to those that are on.
Thank you and welcome, and please go ahead whenever you're ready.
So mayor, council, staff, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Dustin Johnson from the Anacortes Family Center, and I'm here to touch base on our community resource efforts throughout 2021. So I want to note that this is comprehensive from 2021, so this includes a period of time where we've reported previously, but includes all of those that we've served and those that we've served to date since then. Just as a quick overview of our program, this is, this originated as an agreement between the City of Anacortes, the Anacortes Family Center in particular, our Anacortes Parks Department, and Police Department, and Fire Department, in order to do outreach regarding calls involving homelessness, domestic violence, mental health, and chemical dependency, or largely just people that need services that we might be able to connect. This also includes outreach activities primarily conducted between the Anacortes Family Center and the Anacortes Police Department, especially involving those that are parked along T Avenue in RVs or trailers. And we provide kind of a myriad of services, and that's really our goal with this agreement. So those services can include things like shelter, housing applications for long-term, permanent housing primarily, ID and social security cards, access to food or personal hygiene items, a referral to mental health or chemical dependency services, or connecting people to doctor's appointments because of physical ailments. One thing I'll note about this program, we started this in earnest in April of 2021, and it ran all year long. One of the things we did to augment since the last time we reported to council is we added and set aside funds for a mental health provider that can provide services to folks that are coming in off of the street. We did that because there's an acute need for mental health services, and unfortunately, our social service safety net of mental health services provided through Compass or C Mar or others is severely limited and to date is not accepting new patients. So we provided access to an independent counselor that is contracted through the family center through the use of some of our city contracted funds. One of the pieces of this, as I noted, was outreach activities. So this is done out on T Avenue. We do these about once a week or every other week, depending on staffing. We did one of just AFC staff February 18th. We did one with APD on February 11th, and then APD did one without AFC this afternoon. And we will do another tomorrow as an effort for our point in time count, which I'll note in just a minute. At last note, we had about ten RVs identified. This is up from our previous count of six, but compared to this time last year is down by about two. Our Anacortes School District today reports that about thirty-eight kids in our school district qualify for McKinny Vento, that is a national law that protects homeless students. So those are people, those are kids that are either living at the family center, couch surfing, or living in a place not meant for abitation. We have our national point in time count, so this is a one-night effort to count the number of homeless people in each community nationwide. This will take place on Friday, February 25th, and the family center leads that effort for all of Fidalgo Island. We'll do many outreach activities and also what are called magnet events that help kind of canvas the city, either attract people to one particular area or go to areas that we know that people that are homeless might frequent, like food banks, the senior center, the library, and other places, in order to get an accurate count. While this count is never completely accurate, it is the best that nationally we've come up with to try to get a handle on the number of homeless folks.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Johnson, I love your presentation, the detail is always just superb. One of the things that I would look for in your presentation, because all this is wonderful, when you say outreach, occasionally tell us what does that mean? Do you go out and you knock on the RV doors and say, hey, these are the services that we offer, maybe we can help you?
Yep.
That would be very helpful for me.
No, great question, and that is exactly what we do. So we go out with APD or without APD, or APD without AFC, but generally as a team effort, and go and knock on camp, camper doors or RV doors, go to our parks, and go to tents or in, out to cars that we know where people are living, and knock on their windows or doors or tents to offer services, to begin a relationship. Council has received a full report of what we, of the activities that we've engaged in, details other than their redacted name and personally identifying information, what the originating reason for the call was, what services were connected, and what those results look like. And most or a lot of these are because of these outreach type activities that we're conducting with APD or the parks. Yeah, great question. So for a full, comprehensive look at our 2021, again, this is starting in April of last year, so it's not completely conclusive for an entire year, but it's pretty close. You'll note that we served sixty-eight individuals, so most of these individuals came as a result of either an APD or a Parks Department referral. However, these can also include things like a letter to the chamber asking for support, or landlords that are unfortunately having to evict someone but want to connect that person to services. So they can come in a variety of different ways. They can also include folks that just come to the family center to our front door and ask for help or services or food or personal hygiene items. So they can come in a variety of different ways. We had three hundred and ninety-eight contacts, so you'll note on the full redacted report, there were two folks that we had a pre-established relationship with, and we've noted that originating date occurring in 2020. However, everybody thereafter started in April or after that point. And we've served about fifty-seven adults, eleven kids, and you'll see that most of our referrals come through APD, which is really the intent of this contract to begin with. We've done twenty-four, in 2021, we did twenty-four outreach activities, again, starting in April, contacted a hundred and thirty-nine people, and the count as of December of RVs on T was six. You'll note that that's gone up slightly in the last couple of months, but I believe is probably down because of enforcement actions recently. Now, Chief Floyd, we'll talk about some of the successes and challenges of the program through 2021, and then we'll wrap up with questions.
Thank you. All right, Chief, you're on.
I'm a little less vertically challenged than Mr. Johnson. And for the record, we didn't do rock, paper, scissors.
All right.
My slides were in the back.
All right, just a little bit closer to the microphone, Chief, for us.
So as Mr. Johnson pointed out in his part of the presentation, you know, our ultimate goal in these outreach activities is to connect these individuals with services, and we've had some success with those. We've also had a fair number of individuals that have refused to engage with the services that are offered. And so that's the frustrating part of this, is trying to address those problems and figure out how, what the solution is going to be for those individuals going forward. As you're all aware, the Ninth Circuit Court decision limits our ability to take enforcement action when we don't have an alternative place for those individuals to go. As I've instructed my staff, there are other statutes in our state laws that we can enforce that have nothing to do with the Ninth Circuit decision. And I've included some photos on some of these slides here for your reference. I know there are a few of the council members have actually been out and about when we've been addressing these issues and have some other firsthand knowledge. But as you'll see in this photo here, this individual responsible for this RV was issued a criminal citation for allowing their human waste tank to leak onto the city streets. Thanks to Mr. Buckenmeyer's staff at Public Works that responded and removed the contents of this tank before we were able to move the vehicle. This particular vehicle was removed and is in process, or has just completed the process for junk vehicle declaration that will allow for its disposal. This vehicle was located on O Avenue, and I believe Mr. Walters is familiar with this. This individual, our officer saw while out on routine patrol, throwing items of trash out of the RV, and then with the intention of leaving it on the city sidewalk. We addressed this individual and provided them a reasonable amount of time to clean it up, and advised them failure to do so would result in their receipt of a criminal citation for littering greater than one cubic foot. This RV was also removed from the city street and the process completed for junk vehicle declaration that allow for its disposal. This is the most recent issue that we addressed on T Avenue. As you can see in the photos, the amount of trash next to the RV made the sidewalk nearly impassable to pedestrians, and our staff went out there, again, issued two criminal citations for littering greater than one cubic foot, and worked with the Public Works Solid Waste Division to remove all the trash and make the sidewalk passable again to pedestrians. Those are a few of the examples of some of the challenges that we face and where we're making progress addressing other statutes that are outside the span of the Ninth Circuit Court decision. In summary, I'll give you some statistical data year-to-date. So the examples I just gave you and the following stats are regarding enforcement actions that have been taken to address the impact on quality of life and public health by individuals who declined to engage in the social services offered by the city through the Anacortes Family Center using our contractual agreement. We had one infraction issued for blocking a city-owned dumpster by one of these vehicles. The criminal citation I previously mentioned for the deposit of unwholesome substance on the public route of travel. In total, three individuals issued criminal citations for the large amount of litter, and we have to date towed, towed a total of five vehicles from city streets to either private tow company impounds or to city maintenance facilities for storage pending the junk vehicle affidavits being completed.
All right, all right, this is the time for questions from, I have one attendee online, I'll start with them if they have any questions or comments. This is open for public discussion. All right, no hands raised, council, questions? Mr. Young?
Yes, thank you. Chief, unwholesome substance is a big word. So I was hoping you could, as, give me an example that's appropriate to show me where we are. When you say unwholesome substance, that was such a nebulous term. So was that picture that you showed that, okay, that's unwholesome? Okay, I got it.
That is a leaking human waste tank.
You did a bang-up job finding a great word to use there. I just wanted clarity for the public and myself as to what that was, and I understand, and it is very much unwholesome.
Though I'd like to take credit for coming up with that, Mr. Young, that's actually the, that's actually the RCW's title, nine sixty-six zero five zero.
All right, any other questions for Chief or Mr. Johnson?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubig?
Yeah, I've got, thank you, sir, I have a quick question, two questions, actually. Can we get a little bit more background on the number of contacts? I'm assuming it's a mix of staff and counselors from all of the organizations. And then on the first two results, or the second and third results, it says that they've been accepted into Burlington First Steps and denied services. That sounds like a contradiction. Can you all clear this up for us?
Yeah, so it depends on the type of service that we're talking about. So if somebody didn't, is accepted into a program, that does not necessarily mean that when they get there, they accept the services, or that they meet all of the prerequisites. So in that situation, they did not qualify for AFC services, so we referred them out to a low-barrier shelter option that they utilized. And so that's, that's the contradiction that might exist in that language. The other question, I'm sorry?
Going a little bit deeper into the number of contacts, like for the one people, the people that have one contact, how can we tell on here who that contact was from? And assuming the one that has thirty-eight contacts, that's multiple people across multiple agencies?
Yeah, so all of these contacts are AFC, that, they have been responded to by AFC staff. So primarily our Community Resource Manager, or one of our case management staff, or one of our counselors. And generally, it's in that order. So the bulk of these are our Community Resource Manager dispatching out with APD to either have people enter into services, or because people are entering AFC's admin office on Twenty-seventh requesting services, and those services are being delivered through an AFC staff member. So all of these are AFC staff contacts.
And just to clarify, they, they do not include 911 calls, they do not include police contacts, the number of complaints that I get from local business owners, joggers, walkers, I've had more complaints typically, definitely than any other issue since I've been in this office. So yeah, it doesn't, doesn't include a lot of contacts.
Yeah, nor do this, nor does this include all of the people that are referred to AFC through other agencies. This, these are contacts generated because of our partnership and agreement with the City of Anacortes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. I, and there was, I, there was, you had one question about they were denied. I think anecdotally, that was a situation where they had been accepted to First Steps, went and toured it and decided it was not for them. Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was made clear to the public that, and people can choose what they'd like to do. I, I think that we have this in front of us, and if, if folks at home are watching but haven't looked at, looked at the documents, it's pretty incredible the number of contacts that we have made with individual folks. They run from, you know, thirty-eight contacts, twenty, a lot of them have twenty-plus contacts. Some are one or two and clearly have moved on to somewhere else, but up to eighty-plus. Could you talk a little bit, just to give it some context, about the process for making contact and building some trust and the challenges, the reason for having, having to have so many contacts with an individual to get them the services they need? I just think that's interesting for the people to have a better grasp.
Yeah, it's a great question. So the, the big reason for this agreement was really to build rapport and relationship with people that maybe otherwise would be resistant to services or resistant to receive services. And so there's sometimes skepticism if it's just an APD officer responding to, to refer a client. And we know that the more people you put in between a client and the end resource that they're seeking, the less likely that client is to connect with those resources. So most of these clients that we are encountering through this outreach are people that are in extreme mental health distress, are people that have gone through low-barrier programs or are resistant to going into low-barrier programs, usually either because of chemical dependency or mental health. So, and our end goal with all of these clients is really to try to build a relationship so that they feel a sense of security and that they feel like they can enter and begin engagement with some level of service, whether that's a low-barrier shelter, a program like AFC, some sort of mental health counseling, drug treatment. And one of the biggest challenges, and I think probably the reason, and I don't know if Chief would agree with me on this, but I think he probably would, is that there's a big limitation in our mental health services right now. And so we have one person that we've referred into inpatient several times in just the last quarter of last year. That person cannot extend past the fourteen-day stay. We used to have four hundred beds at Northern State that we could refer into, that's been That's been replaced by three beds at Skagit Valley Hospital. So you, there's just a big gap in our ability to connect people that are in acute mental health distress with services that would really help them to succeed and ex, kind of, uh, extend out of the mental health crisis that they, they're in. So what that results in is multiple contacts over many, many and large amounts of time, um, where we just do the best we can to, to make small iterative steps toward improvement.
And I think HASC Committee, the work that you all have done on that committee has clearly identified that as one of the major shortfalls, and I think everybody's seen that across the board, uh, and especially with a couple of incidents that we have had with our, our own folks. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I'd like to thank the family center and Mr. Johnson and also APD for coming up with the program, um, that we started last year to involve the family center, uh, with these cases. They're doing a great job. I think it's very clear that there's so much more that we, we can do. Uh, there's more coordination, but there's also more that we can do to help people before they hit crisis levels. Um, you know, bef, before an elderly person loses their house, before a person, uh, gets into some kind of, uh, chemical dependency or behavioral health crisis. Um, and maybe we can do more outreach that way. Uh, I, I, I think that there's a lot of value in having this relationship between the family center and the police department, but that shouldn't be the only relationship between, uh, the city and the family center. Um, and we've been exploring those possible extensions of this in the HACS Committee, the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee. I, I think it's also worth hitting, uh, a little bit more on the, the question of why the police department's hands are tied with respect to problem RVs. Um, Chief Floyd mentioned my name, took it in vain when he had one of those RVs on screen, and I just want to make it clear that's not my RV. Um, but I, I was there when, um, APD was there hauling that away, and, um, at a very high level, the cases have led us to, uh, where we are now, which is that, um, we can't criminalize homelessness, and if someone has an RV that they're living in, we can't criminalize, um, or use the criminal laws that we might apply otherwise, um, their, their stay in that RV, and that's the only option that they have, just a very high level. So, uh, I think APD has done a good job of figuring out how to navigate that and figuring out what else that they can do, because being homeless can't be a crime, but it also doesn't give them a license to create other criminal activity like the unwholesome substance that was deposited on the street, like litter, like all those other, um, secondary effects of homelessness. Um, but also moreover, we, you know, we don't want people to be homeless. Uh, we, it's not just that we don't want to see them, and the family center has been doing a great job of trying to connect people to those resources. Um, I'm hopeful, because we did have a conversation in the HACS Committee with, um, the First Step Center, that the First Step Center will be expanding their capacity and will then have more capacity countywide, um, for people that need those, that support, because where people have other options, then they don't have a right to pursue an option, uh, living on the streets of Anacortes. So, um, we're figuring this out. It's slow, it's frustrating, um, it's frustrating for the police department as well, but they're making progress, and we're making progress, and I think we are all very dedicated to the idea that we're not going to let it get as bad as it has gotten in Seattle. We are getting ahead of it much faster than Seattle got ahead of their problem, uh, and we are going to stay on it until the problem really is resolved, which means that people are getting the help they need.
All right. Any other comments? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, Chief Floyd. Appreciate the presentation and, uh, again, selfishly, uh, looking towards the future contract, uh, we'll make, make a note, we're like, like the way things are going. So appreciate that, uh, that input. All right, uh, being no further business, I will adjourn the city council meeting of 22nd February. Thank you very much.